Welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission for October 13, 2022. So the meeting is now called to order and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any staff announcements?
Madam Chair, good morning, members of the Planning Commission. If I can just make mention of the 27th Planning Commission meeting. This meeting has been dedicated to getting all the feedback from the Planning Commission to discuss the GHD reduction plan. The meeting has been noticed. However, the information that would go into the report itself has not been received. So I am hoping that soon we would get that information and then we would have a report and things of that nature for you to consider. But we've been given a promise that we would get that information and on advice of the CAO, we went ahead and noticed the hearing because we want to get this moving forward sooner than later. So, thank you.
On that score, if there's much of a delay, I think we're going to have to re-notice the meeting because this is going to take a lot of study on the part of the commissioners. We can't just get it and pass on it immediately.
Yeah. Commissioner Ladish, basically what we're going to get is how the proposed reduction plan has met the target of 40% beyond 1990 numbers by 2035. So all the discussions that we had about ag and all those other items that we talked about, those will be quantified to see how that results in our target of 40% reduction. So if we hit the 40% mark, then it means that we have done all the things that we thought we would be able to do and then the project will move forward to the next step, which is creating a climate action plan. If we fall short of 40%, then we have to figure out exactly how do we get to 40%. And it might mean, and I'm not making any recommendations here, it might mean that we would have to reconsider some of those programs that we kicked out of the reduction plan to get to 40 or figure out another way to get to 40. But we have made a commitment in our general plan to adopt SB 32, which is 40% reduction of 1990 numbers to get to 2035. So we have between now and 2035 to achieve that. And our current proposals that have been considered by the Planning Commission, do those get us to that number that we're looking for?
But we need to look at what they have, how they have changed the plan.
Yes, oh, definitely.
To make sure that they've done it the way we want them to have done it.
Yes.
And that's going to take looking at each measure once again.
We will.
To see what's going on.
Right.
And that's going to take a lot of preparation on our part, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any agenda changes?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Then we will open this up for public comment on any item of interest to the Planning Commission, but not on the agenda today. And I see no one in the audience. I'm assuming this is Ashley.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. So you're just here to watch?
I'm Deputy Executive Commissioner.
Oh, I thought that you looked familiar. Now I figured out who you are.
Carrie Bassett.
Okay. Thank you. Annette, is there anybody online?
There is no online public comment.
Then we will close the public comment portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of the commission or public would like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I just have a couple of typo corrections on the minutes.
Sure.
Shall I go ahead with that?
Yep.
Okay. On the meeting minutes of September 8, 2022, under Staff Discussion, it should be Gabriel Elliott, Director of Planning, presented ED the item. I'm standing in for Commissioner Rooster here.
I circled that and decided it didn't require me.
And on the meeting minutes of September 22, under item number two, the fourth line down, it talks of the Halter family and it should be the Hattler, H-A-T-L-E-R, family. Those are the major changes I have suggested.
So is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on the approval of the consent agenda with the typos corrected?
Also move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So passes 401 with Commissioner Rooster absent. And we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 1, 2022-035, zoning amendment for establishment of agriculture preserve and Williamson Act Contract 391 for Robert and Ashley Friend. And Gina will take it away.
This is three out of four. So as a result of receiving California Land Conservation Contract Application 391 from Robert and Ashley Friend, we have zoning amendment 2002-34, which consists of one legal parcel of 270 acres comprised of two assessor parcels. The subject property is located approximately 1 and 1/2 miles southwest of the town of Balacito, lodged in between the Borbie Ranch Road and Red Hill Road. Currently, the property is leased by the Rasmussen Ranch, LLC. The ag operation consists of 24 head of beef cattle that generate a gross annual income of $18,000. A feasibility study conducted by our county farm advisor, Scott Onetto, was conducted, which indicates the land can produce a gross annual income of $54.45 per acre annually. Both of these exceed the minimum requirements to be eligible for the Williamson Act, which is $2,000, and that is set forth in Board of Supervisors Resolution 75489. Being that the property is 270 acres, the parcel meets the minimum 100-acre requirement for the Williamson Act and 50 acres for the ag preserve zone. The property is designated by the County General Plan as resource production in addition to working lands, which both identify lands capable and primarily used for agricultural operations, includes lands with conservation easements. The ag preserve zone applies to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed. The ag preserve zone is consistent in both the resource production and the working land land use designations. This area of the county is noted as being, of course, very high fire hazard area, much like just about the rest of Calaveras County is. Grazing livestock will reduce vegetation. Maintaining this land and agriculture encourages best management practices, managing brush, eliminating invasive plant species, developing water systems, all help to reduce and manage the risk of wildfire exposure. Wildlife is abundant, some of which are protected species. There's a list of them in your staff report. Policies of the conservation and open space element of the general plan encourage open space for the preservation of natural resources such as wildlife habitat, in addition to managed production of resources, including forests, rangeland, and agricultural land. The areas surrounding these properties are mostly designated resource production as well as working lands and zone for intense commercial operations. Some of those existing operations include grazing land for livestock, growing of hay, vineyards, and even a few orchards. In addition, the smaller parcels are utilized for more personal scale farming and ranching activities. Zoning this property ag preserve is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land uses currently in place. On August 24, the agriculture advisory committee met, taking under consideration information provided by planning as it relates to the general plan. In addition to the application, they voted to recommend the Board of Supervisors establishes the contract. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the County General Plan. Additionally, the California Land Conservation Contract Application and the zoning amendment meet the minimum requirements set forth in Board of Supervisors Resolution 75489, Chapter 17.18 of the County Code, in addition to general plan policies. Staff's recommendation is that you pass along a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve this zoning amendment upon establishment of ag preserve and Williamson Act Contract 391. If you have any questions of me or any questions of Carrie, we will be happy to address them.
Well, I just need some education as a planning commissioner. Do these two assessor parcels together, they constitute one legal parcel?
Yeah, so there's one legal parcel.
And what is a legal parcel?
They are actually a part of a larger map, so they are both a portion of Parcel B, noted as Parcel Map 3-133. So the assessor has given them two separate assessment numbers for assessment purposes only, but the 270 acres is one legal parcel. It's not two separate parcels.
Couldn't be sold independently.
It cannot be sold individually.
Oh.
That's for a separate book or something.
They are falling under different pages in Book 57. So yeah, so they're separated by page, which gives them a different number. Again, it has nothing to do with the legal parcel. They are both considered Parcel B of this map totaling 270.
And they are the only, together they constitute the entire legal parcel?
Yes, the two APNs.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always nice to get educated.
Anything else?
Well, yeah, is, now our resource production lands and working lands, are those subcategories of natural resource lands?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for Gina? Are we ready for a recommendation or are there any comments on the resolution?
Resolution?
Just for clarity, now that you've clarified my mind.
Okay.
And the first whereas, I think within the parentheses, or it says one legal parcel, just insert the word constituting one legal parcel.
Okay.
Make it clear. And then in the evidence for number two, it could be confusing where we have two parcels but three designations. Do we need to say natural resource lands or can we just say?
We don't need to.
Yeah.
You want me to strike it?
I'd strike that out.
Okay.
Those resource production and working lands. If there's no disagreement.
You s-
Oh, and let's see, right in the split between pages one and two, the evidence says open space contracts are easements exempt from SEQA, the establishment of agricultural preserves, and I would insert the word and. The making and renewing of open space contracts. And that's it for me.
Commissioner Ladish, could you go over that again so I can?
Sure.
Are you talking about the bottom of page one?
Bottom of page one, the top of page two.
Okay.
Evidence Article 19 categorical exemption, section, da-da-da-da-ba-ba-ba, exempts from SEQA the establishment of agricultural preserves.
Mm-hmm.
And is what I would insert.
And the making and renewing.
And renewing of open space contracts.
Okay, yeah. Good.
As always, a very nicely prepared package. Thank you very much.
So I believe we are ready for the recommendation.
Commissioner Potnick, do you need to open up public comment?
Oh, you're correct. Thank you. Even though there is no one here, we'll open and close it. So is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? This is your opportunity for public comment.
We have no online public comment.
So with no members of the public in attendance, we will close the public comment portion of this item.
I'd like to thank our staff member from the Agricultural Department for being here today in case there were questions.
And adding that smile. So now we're ready for the recommendation.
Okay. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2022-012 recommending the Board of Supervisors, recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 571524 and 571808 from general agriculture to agriculture preserve for Robert and Ashley, mis-spelling noted, Friend, upon the board approval to establish ag preserve and Williamson Act Contract Number 391 for 270 acres based on the findings, including therein as amended.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to move to accept the resolution with the corrections included.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Passes 401 with Commissioner Rooster absent.
Yeah. Follow-up on Kelly to make sure everything's okay. I apologize for only bringing one item before you today. I know this is quite a task to have to come all the way down. But as you know, the ag preserves are kind of on a fast and furious schedule to get to the board before the end of the year because everything has to be approved and recorded before December 31 in order to be taking effect on January 1. So if we miss any deadlines with the holiday schedule, we've only got, you know, we're limited board meetings and so, you know, we try to always bring something together with another project just so you don't have to listen to one, but unfortunately, it didn't work out with what I've got going with these applications. But we have one more to come before you.
Thank you. And do we have any commissioner reports?
Well, I'd just like to underline the need for preparation for this next consideration. And I personally am going to be out of town for a part of this period and I was counting on this weekend to work on the next meeting's agenda. So whatever we can do to light the fire under the consultants would be good.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I don't think we can afford to push it back for the very same reason that we need this completed before the end of the year, so we will not be able to extend it over multiple meetings either. We really need to plan to spend enough time on that day to complete it, is my understanding. Okay. So the sooner the better, of course.
What's the latest we've heard from the consultants as to when you're going to get this?
I will be checking with the CAO this morning to see what the latest is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I won't be around starting November the 15th until December the 1st, basically going to police.
Oh, boy.
Oh, how fun.
Yes.
You could zoom in.
Yeah, I might be margarita-ing at that time.
That might make for a very interesting.
Or some kind of a tropical.
Don, what was that? What were those dates again?
It'll be, I believe, the 15th through the 1st of December. 15th of November through the 1st of-
Oh, 15th of November.
Right. You will be here for the next meeting.
I will.
Yeah, and just on that, November 10, I will not be available.
I have no idea what my schedule is, but I plan to be here.
I would guess that Commissioner Rooster is up in the Sierras bringing in the cattle.
Yeah, they've been bringing them down for weeks, though, so it would be, because we are expecting, I guess, some-
Some weather coming in next week. Maybe they're gathering stragglers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should give him a call to find out what's going on.
Yeah, we'll try to get in contact with him. I'm certain that's probably what's going on, but we'll get in contact with him just to make sure everything's okay.
Maybe just an email to us when the items are posted online so we don't have to wait for them to arrive.
Okay.
In the mail, because I guess some of my packets actually arrived so late that it's already happened.
You know, I'm on the list for the planning department, so I get the- Right. We've been experiencing some issues with the mail.
Yes.
We've had a number of envelopes that have been returned for no obvious reason. Addresses are correct, everything is, you know, all accurate as far as we can tell. They just keep, and from what we understand, because we have been in contact with the postal service, is that there must have been some sort of glitch with the machine and it was automatically kicking back mail flats in particular as non-deliverable. So, you know, and for some reason, they're being held up in the system for an incredibly long time before we actually get those returned to us. So we don't really have any idea that you haven't gotten your packet, so maybe we need to come up with a better identification of, you know, hey, your packet is in the mail.
Right.
I'd say your packet's in the mail or in the alternative, if you want to pick it up personally.
Right.
It'll be available-
You know, you can just download them off the website easily.
But this next one's going to be-
Right, unless it's a huge packet, so.
I'd have a question for the other commissioners, and that is whether the, whether they, I have not been receiving, I couldn't get in the county email the last full day.
I talked to IT yesterday. They changed something, so there's a new login address. Everything else is the same. As soon as he gave me the new address, I was able to log in, but then I needed to change my password immediately.
He probably put that out on the email after the change of the address, but we need to be notified and how to get into the system.
Mine actually said it was holding all of my emails somewhere.
So maybe-
Wow. Mine just said it's redetected too many times.
Or somehow we'd need to be notified of the-
Yeah, so if your email is still not operating correctly and you can't access it, just send Annette an email or send her an email. Give her, just give her a ring and she can go ahead and notify IT.
Okay, what's the, what's the best way? What's the number for Annette, then?
Well, you know what? Our email's not working. Just call me. You can just call me and then I will, because Annette's working from home and then I'll-
My personal email, that way they respond to my personal email, so I was able to-
Sure, okay.
My email's not working.
It's still not working?
No.
Okay, okay.
I thought it was just a glitch, so I waited two days and then I realized, oh, I better find out.
Okay, all right. Between Annette and myself, we'll contact IT and get it.
And please don't send out the answer by email.
We'll fix it for you. I'm glad to see it wasn't just me.
Yeah, me too.
But I can give you the link if you need it. It's just mail.calaveras.gov. I'll pull it up for you.
Yeah, it's, it's like, but it's like, it's mail dot, is it CO.calaveras? Something is reversed from the way it used to be.
Probably just walk right to the IT department and they'll-
It's mail.calaverascounty, all one word.
I'm sorry, slower, slower. Mail dot calaveras.
Calaverascounty, and Calaverascounty's all one word.
And county spelled out now?
Yes.
Yes.
Only for this purpose.
And then .gov.
Oh. Gee, we don't have to go through California, US, world, and so.
Legacy, whatever, yes.
That's a word.
But that-
And if it doesn't, you can call me.
And what's your number?
It's 209-286-1910. I'll be happy to try to help you.
Thank you very much.
Happy to try.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything else? So I just have a question that if this consulting package is not available, is, would it be possible to move the meeting to November 3 or the first Thursday of the month?
The problem is getting it on the Board of Supervisors' agenda in time.
The CAO's been heavily involved in trying to figure out what's going on the different Board of Supervisors' schedules by the end of the year and there's kind of an overload. And so we basically, the understanding from above is we have one meeting as long as it takes to deal with it and then we, they're going to try to get it on, I think, November 8. I think November 8.
So the hangup is the consultant?
Yes.
And if we have to, if we can't do our job properly, why, that's all too bad.
I think the reality of it is that we can't have much discussion on this, but as we've identified in the past, it's, there are many challenges to this process. We're relying on a lot of extrapolations and estimates and we're just going to have to go with what we get and make whatever adjustments we can, do our best. And I think our choices are going to be limited anyway with items that will be significant enough to move the needle, to meet our own created goal of the 40% reduction. So it would have been nice to have seen their summary of what they thought we told them back in advance, so we could at least have looked at that even without the quantification, just so we knew that it reflected what we thought we talked about, or what we remember.
Without getting into detail, there were some miscommunications and misunderstandings about what was needed for the consultant to proceed and that has gotten worked out in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
They may want us to discuss it much more.
I think that would-
They're going to try and get it right to the deadline so that we can't talk about it anymore. That's what I think's going to happen.
Well, I'm glad you voiced that, but I'm not sure I agree. It's a large task that they're doing.
It's a large task and we're never going to have all the information we would like to have in order to do it. That's just the reality. So we're going to- So we're going to do our best on whatever that date, 27th of October. And we will plan to be here for the duration, I guess.
Bring it up.
And how much time are the consultants allocated for that meeting?
My understanding is the consultants are not coming themselves. They are going to, if the calculations run to where it's, we're short and we're not going to meet our target with the chosen reduction, they're going to suggest some additional measures that are apparently going to be tailored to the more rural counties that we might want to adopt in order to get there.
Get the dairy farms back in there.
And then prohibit them.
Yeah.
Thank you. Unless there's anything else, does anybody else have any comments? Then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody. Look forward to seeing you in two weeks.